Win-win scenario happen. But I think you have one coming up in November with regard to the gravel pit subject that you just passed through your consent agenda. And what I'd like to do, if it's permissible, is just talk a little bit about what you're seeing in November. Is that allowable to speak to something that isn't on tonight's agenda?
I don't believe it is because it's quasi judicial.
Okay.
So I think that.
Can I speak to process then as opposed to the specific issue?
Where's our attorney?
I'm right here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, it's okay. We rotate out. My name is Shannon Baudelay. I'm one of the Assistant Borough Attorneys. I'm staffing the meeting tonight. I just want to remind you in advance that I'm here on behalf of staff as an advocate role because it's a quasi judicial matter.
Okay.
What I will say is we would recommend that you don't provide. I mean, I can't, I can't tell you not to provide or to testify, but I will remind the commission that this is not the time for them to take or consider evidence. The applicant is not here. And they're required to keep a record of the evidence that they take in support of their decision. And so it's not really appropriate for them to keep it in their minds and make a decision based on it later.
Yeah, fair enough. So the applicant is here tonight, but to your point, I don't want to, I don't want to mess up the process. So I will have certainly things to say next month, and you'll be getting information from us in writing. I just wanted to lay this, lay the groundwork for that, but I'm fine holding off on my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next person is Father Randy Hillman. Then I'll call on whoever else is in the room. Take your time, you're fine.
My name is Father Randy Hillman. I'm speaking for myself and not the church. Thank you, Commissioners and Madam Chair Putin. I'm speaking for the wind farm as a nuclear physicist and into energy prior to going to Vietnam.
Excuse me, Father Randy. Are you speaking on a subject that's on the agenda?
Yes.
This is not the time to do that.
Oh.
I'm sorry. This is anything that's not on the agenda.
Not on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. I just apologize.
That's okay. Did you have anything else you wanted to talk about? Okay, thank you. All right, and that's the end of our sign-in sheet. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak? Please come up and please state your name and spell your last name.
Oh, I'd be honored to. My name is John Klapperich. There's only three Klapperichs in the world that I'm related to. It's K-L-A-P-P-E-R-I-C-H. Looks like Klapperich. We pronounce it Klapprich. I understand intimately about the speaking on items that are on the agenda. I'm not speaking on that. I'm speaking on a public hearing to come. And I understood and understand what you're saying is, but I clearly have the ability, being a 45-year Matsui Borough taxpayer and a six-year Planning Commission Chairman. This is not quasi judicial. Everything I'm about to say is available to you all at the same time. So I'm going to use my three minutes just to say something. I'm personally, I've been a business consultant for 40 years in the Matsui Borough, and I'm here to speak on an advocate of the Central Gravel Products Expansion Plan. And why I feel that it's so important for the planning commissions to hear this is that there are some conditional use permits that are more gravitacious, that are bigger, that involve more than the business owner. This isn't about a business owner. This is about 53% of the Matsui Borough residents that pay taxes that depend on reasonable and accessible and enough products, whether you're a paver, whether you're a roofer, whether you're a glazer, whether you're an electrician, whether you're an equipment operator. 50% of the employment people that pay taxes here depend on quality gravel products. This isn't about a business wanting to say, oh, I want an advantage over someone else. This isn't a racetrack, although I love my racetrack owner. This is about something that affects 56% of the people that pay taxes in the Matsui Borough. So I'm just a strong proponent, and I highly encourage you to take the time because sometimes, planning commissioners, you hear me here a month from now at 7:15, and then we're asked to say, oh, make a decision at 7:20. I want you to consider.
Sir.
How big this is. My three minutes are up, and I thank you for your patience and your trust.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak on a subject that is not on the agenda? All right, do we have anyone on the phone? Okay, thank you. All right. Is there any objection to closing audience participation? Hearing and seeing none, audience participation is closed. So we are moving on to our public hearing, quasi judicial matters. Okay, and the resolution is 24-30. A conditional use permit in accordance with MSB 17.67, tall structures including telecommunication facilities, wind energy conservation systems, and other tall structures for six meteorological towers up to 197 feet tall located on Little Mount Susitna within Township 15 North, Range 9 West, Section 5 Township 16 North, Range 9 West, Section 16, 29, 32, and 33, and Township 16 North, Range 10 West, 16, I'm sorry, Section 13, Sewered Meridian. Applicant Chad Allen for Little Mount Susitna Wind LLC. Staff Rick Benedict, current planner. To the planning commissioners. I always do this wrong, so I'm going to try to do this right tonight. If it's an affirmative, please let me know. Okay? All right, so, planning commissioners, do you or any member of your immediate family have a substantial financial interest, substantial financial interest, in any property affected by this decision? Or will you recognize foreseeable profit as a result of this decision? Any affirmatives? No. Okay. Have you received or otherwise engaged in ex parte contact with the applicant, appellant, or other interested parties or members of the public concerning this application either before, during, or after this matter was submitted for decision? No. Okay, everyone said no for the record. Are you able to be impartial in this decision?
Yes.
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 And everyone has said yes. Okay, fabulous. All right, so now I would like to invite Rick Benedict up to, or to proceed. Go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Chair, thank you. My name is Rick Benedict, current planner with the Development Services Division here at the Borough. So Chad Allen, on behalf of Little Mount Susitna Wind LLC, submitted a conditional use permit application to construct up to six 197-foot-tall meteorological towers on state-owned land atop a plateau on Little Mount Susitna. MSB 1767 requires owners, requires towers exceeding 125 feet to obtain a conditional use permit. The staff report and application materials begin on page 408 of your packets. In addition to your packet materials, a handout has been provided containing an amended resolution clarifying, clarifying the proposed tower locations and adding two conditions of approval. The handout also includes materials to be presented by the applicant this evening. The approximate location of each tower identified within engineered site plans found on pages 447 through 465 of your packets. The proposed tower sites will be determined upon acceptable ground conditions at each site during the construction phase. However, each tower will be installed within the section boundary identified in the engineered site plans, and the applicant will voluntarily install each tower to maintain a setback of at least the tower's height from the nearest section boundary. In addition, the applicant has agreed to provide the borough with final coordinates after the completion of each tower. The proposed tower's remote locations, a lack of privately-owned property in the area, provide a natural buffer that helps minimize the visual impact on the surrounding area. The nearest privately-owned land, which aerial mapping shows is undeveloped, is approximately 2.7 miles northeast of Site LM6, which is within your applications. The proposed towers are not visible from any public parks. The closest recognized trail is Sleeping Lady Trail, approximately five miles east of the site known as LM6. The closest water body is Trail Lake, approximately 11 miles northeast of the site known as LM6. The tower and its guy wires will be marked with FAA-compliant paint, guy guards, and marker balls. The FAA's online notice criteria tool indicates the proposed towers do not exceed the notice criteria, meaning they do not pose a hazard to air navigation or existing airports and airfields. According to the MSB's 2017 Regional Aviation System Plan study, the closest airport identified in the plan is Flatbourn Lake Seabase, approximately 15 miles east of the site known as LM8. The nearest known private airstrip is approximately 11 miles east of the site known as LM8. A tall structure conditional use permit requires the applicant to notify the public and hold a community meeting before applying to the borough. The locations for these towers are 32 miles west of Big Lake, which makes them well outside the area, community council area, well outside any community council area. The closest community council is Willow Area Community Organization. The applicant held a, held a community meeting in the Willow Community Center on June 3, 2024. The applicant's compiled information for the applicant's public notice and public meeting is in your packet between pages 710 and 839. MSB staff mailed out public hearing notices, and because of the remoteness of this location and the scope of the project, staff expanded the public noticing area to a 10-mile radius of the proposed sites. Staff mailed notices to property owners, posted the application material on the borough website for public review, and published the public notice in the local newspaper, according to MSB 1703. Staff also emailed a public notice and a request for comments to the Willow Area Community Organization, Borough Offices, and outside agencies. No comments were received from the Willow Area Community Organization. Five written comments opposing the meteorological towers and one no objection comment were received from the public and are available for review in your packets between pages 916 and 934. PC Resolution 24-30, listing staff's recommended findings and conditions of approval can be found in tonight's handout, starting on page 11. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit to install up to six meteorological towers within lands listed in the resolution. The applicant meets all the standards of MSB 1767 for a tall structure conditional use permit. Man, that concludes my staff report for this evening.
Thank you. Okay. How are you tonight?
I am well, thank you.
And Chad Allen?
Chad is traveling, so Matt Perkins.
Okay.
I was here last year, but it's been a whole year.
It has been.
And this is Faith.
Yeah.
Okay, Matt and Faith?
Yes.
All right. Go ahead if you have anything to add.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for having us tonight. It feels really good to be back in Palmera. I lived here for a really long time before, before moving to Ingridge. My name is Faith. I lead community engagement and accountability here at Alaska Renewables, and Little Mount Susitna Wind is one of our projects that I've had the honor of working, working to try and make this a reality for almost two years now. So it's always humbling to be here. So I just wanted to share a little bit of our motivation. Or actually, let me hand, my colleague will introduce himself.
I don't have anything to add. My name is Matt Perkins, and I've been working on this project for four years.
Yeah. So our goal is really to reduce energy costs for Alaskans and increase energy security while building a sustainable economy and creating locally-driven, sustainable energy solutions. So Rick did such a wonderful job. He, you kind of ran the show already, but I can go through the slides quickly, and if you guys would like, we can pause and answer questions as we go. And so these, this application is for meteorological campaign, which are temporary structures, like he mentions, that collects weather data. Currently, there are three meteorological towers installed on Little Mount Susitna, which are the green points here, and we are asking to permit six additional tower locations, which are in purple. If you look closely on the map, there is a tiny blue dot, and that location is already permitted, but there is nothing installed on it. And the reason why we're here is because MSB Chapter 1767 requires a permit. These tower sites have been permitted through DNR, who is the landowner. So the meteorological towers, they're used to measure wind data and direction for resource assessment. Each tower is between 50 and 60 meters with four sets of guy wires. And like he mentioned, it's painted with FAA-compliant paint, and there is no lighting required, and towers are engineered for harsh climates such as the weather on Little Mount Susitna. And again, here are the coordinates listed, as well as the map. And one of the questions that we get sometimes is visibility. What is it like when it is winter? And I thought it would be best to just show you guys what it looks like. So here's a picture of our crew during, I think they were servicing the Met Towers up in Little Mount Susitna last winter. And then here we go, the nearest property is 2.7 miles away, and we've been in touch with that landowner over the last couple of years. And then towers are not expected to be visible from this location, and one tower may be barely visible from Trail Lake at a distance of over 11 miles. And as Rick mentioned, the nearest recreation site is Sleeping Lady, and then 11 miles from the named lake, Trail Lake. And then the nearest airport is 17.7 miles away from the Beluga Airport, and these towers are compliant with FAA criteria. And any questions? That was very quick, lots of information, so.
Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. So at this time, we'll go ahead and open for a public hearing. Open public hearing on Resolution 24-30. If there's anyone on the phone who wish to speak, please press star 3. And we'll go ahead and start with the audience. So on our sign-in sheet, we have Father Randy. And please state your name and spell your last name.
Father Randy Hillman, H-I-L-L-M-A-N. Thank you, planning board members and Commissioner. I'm speaking for myself and not for the church. I support this data-driven. Get all choked up now. But anyway, to the point, it will, is it possible that the planners would consider letting be more community-driven in regards to allowing Matsui Regional, Matsui Borough EMS through the Emergency Planning Commission attach a tower or two and tie it into your system? Since you have a wind generation, you could supply 24 volts to operate an emergency management system out there. We have a very unique radiation pattern here for transmission radio signals, and the, that particular location would be very advantageous for us to reach upper part of the Matsui region. It's very difficult to get out there. I, as a ham operator in our units here, we were looking at trying to get a new system out, but unfortunately, we can't get a new system to get out there. And it's very important to do that. And I would link you some of the rest of my time for comments and discussion with them in regards to adding that to their plan. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wish to speak in the audience? Okay, is there anyone on the phone? No, okay. All right, is there any objection to closing public hearing? Hearing seeing none, public hearing is closed. Okay, Mr. Benedict, do you have anything else to add?
Madam Chair, the only thing I have to add in response to that is Borough Code doesn't specifically touch on that subject as making any requirements or speak to those types of additions to towers.
Okay.
Through the, through the chair, can you repeat what you just said? I didn't hear you clearly.
The comment from the public, I was just trying to relate it to the commission, that code doesn't, doesn't speak to that, to that comment. It doesn't require, under telecommunication, telecommunication towers, it, code does speak to co-location amongst providers, but not ham radio. So I'm just trying to clarify that our code doesn't touch on that issue.
Either way.
Right, correct, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, do you guys have anything else you'd like to say?
I would just thank Father Randy for the suggestion, and it is something we absolutely will take into consideration. It's worth noting that there is a microwave communication tower at the southern end of the site. It belongs to a private operator exclusively for access into a resort in Judd Lake. There is no other communication out there, and certainly, if this and expansions of the project related to the power generation go forth, there will be communication added. And just thanks to him and for the, you know, anyone in the community for these kinds of ideas, they make it more useful to all of us. So yeah, very good information to reach the upper watershed areas from there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so at this time, I will entertain a motion for Resolution 24-30.
Commissioner Allen, I'll move Resolution 2-24-30, please.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Glenn, I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Allen made the motion. Commissioner Glenn made the second for Resolution 24-30. Okay, open for discussion.
Commissioner Allen, I think we're all aware that the valley is growing and that our energy needs are only going up, and we are seeing a decline in natural gas in the Cook Inlet, which can pose a real problem for us in the future. And so I think these sort of creative ideas are what we need right now. And so I think this is, you know, I appreciate, this is a very extensive packet. They've done a lot of research, a lot of work here, and I appreciate that. I appreciate, I mean, they even, you know, photos of the actual equipment that they're going to use, the things they're doing to, to secure that equipment. It's very in-depth. I have read the comments and, you know, some of the concerns that citizens have, but I think anytime you have a project, you're going to have some folks who might be somewhat impacted by that project have objections to it. But I think this is one of those things where we need to really look at the greater good, and this has the potential to help a lot of people. So anyway, I support the project, thanks.
Any other comments?
Commissioner McCabe, I'm just curious. I was thinking about, this must cost a lot. Where is the money coming from? Is this federal grants, or how are you funding the research?
Through the chair, Commissioner McCabe. Great question, and a lot actually has happened since we were here one year ago. And I think, good to see you again, if I recall. A lot has happened in a year. So we ran a competitive banking process to identify who would be good lenders for the project, and we received a, frankly, a confidential but healthy number of bids from different American investors, and we selected one that is US-based, and so they will be providing the primary financing for the project. There are federal funds available. Some of those are discretionary, and certainly, if they can benefit us by getting a lower cost of power, we will pursue them. There are also formula-based tax incentives that apply to, really, most new power generation sources these days, whether you're doing geothermal or carbon capture or whatever. And so some of those, we are immediately eligible for. Those expire soon. I mean, soon in the, not like tomorrow, but in the context of power plant development, they expire relatively soon. So we're moving as quickly as we can to make sure the project gets through final financing in that timeframe. But yeah, happy to answer anything else on that.
I have one follow-up. What is the price break for you to, I know you're a long ways off from having 80 windmills, but what is the price point? What, what kilowatt hour, how does it compare to gas and coal?
Yeah, sure. I can't completely answer the question because we are still in confidential negotiations with Matanuska Electric and Chugatch Electric on exactly that point. So I apologize for being a little bit coy, but the number that we agree upon collectively with them will be filed with the Regulatory Commission of Alaska as part of another set of permits that must be approved. And the goal is, as Faith identified, to lower and stabilize the price of power in Alaska. I could, as an engineer who's been developing power generation equipment and worked on coal in China 20 years ago, and I worked on gas 15 years ago in America, I could opine at a length on this very, very important question, but my short answer for you is, your utilities are negotiating on your behalf. And if you heard what MEA said with us, to us, on the stage last week at the Matsui Economic Development Forum, you will know that they are negotiating pretty hard.
I wasn't actually there, but I know my husband was. And it won't affect my rate because we're off-grid.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, you asked.
The gas, for the letter.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Not really a question, just a statement, I guess. Bay of Alaska is facing a, probably a pretty significant economic hardship as far as energy goes. It's no secret that we're running low on gas, and so that is going to affect power pretty significantly. I do think that finding alternative means of energy is a good idea. I will say with some of the comments that were made and some of the letters that were brought forward, some, some major concerns would be the location of how close to the wetlands that are, and bird strikes are no stranger to windmills and things like that, which I recognize is not part of, you know, what we make rulings on, but it is just something, I think, for the public to keep in mind. But per going through everything that, in their application, everything seems to be up to par for, for them, so I'll be supporting this.
Are there any other questions? Comments? Okay, I have one. I was curious if you could kind of give us an idea of, because this is really the first wind farm experiments in the valley, right in Matsui. Can you give us an idea of time? Can you give us an idea of timelines of what happens next, just as ideas of how, how it will work? And you can be speculative.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Cohen. So we will be gathering the wind data for another year. We have been gathering the data, to Commissioner Shane's point, on, on bird pathways, which is extremely important because there are many bodies at the federal level and state level that govern this, you know, related, I'll note, related to wind farms, but not to skyscrapers. So we will be gathering that data for a number, a number more years. The intent is to bring this before the RCA by the end of next year, and then to have final permit approval by 2028 and begin construction that year with power flowing by 2029.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Any other questions? All right, are there any amendments? No amendments. Okay. Are there any objections? Hearing and seeing none. Resolution 24-30 passes. Okay, we are moving on to public hearing legislative matters, Resolution 24-29, and we have a minor change to make. Alex, would you like to explain it?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Alex Strong, Planning Director of the Matsu Borough. So we, unfortunately, this does not have a complete packet. This is, if, if you were reviewing this and it was confusing to you, I apologize. The actual ordinance that you're supposed to be reviewing and adopting a resolution on is not in here, and so we ask that you go ahead and take public testimony, if people came here to talk about it, but then to postpone this till the next meeting, in which, at which time I'll give a full staff report and what's in the ordinance that is not in your packet tonight.
Okay. So I will go ahead and read the resolution. We will do public hearing, and then we will look for a motion to postpone. Resolution 24-29, a resolution of the Matanuska-Susitna Borough Planning Commission recommending approval of an ordinance amending MSP 17.73 to clarify that mobile home parks are not permitted in the Matanuska-Susitna Borough. Staff, Alex Strong, Planning and Land Use Director. Alex? We're just gonna.
I, I'm hoping to give a full staff report at the next meeting, when, when we actually have the material in front of us.
Perfect. So then I'm going to open the public hearing on Resolution 24-29. Is there anyone in the audience who wish to speak? I do have actually a sign-in sheet. So Mr. Hanson, would you like to go ahead and come up? If there's anyone on the phone, just press star 3, we'll get to you right after the pub, okay. Go ahead.
Thank you again, Rod Hanson with the North Lakes Community Council, and it's kind of, kind of different to walk up to the podium, having achieved your outcome without saying a word. So, so I'm, I'm here to recommend you postpone the resolution. But I, I would like to just explain a little bit of the, of the reasons behind that, and I, I spoke, I think, with this body earlier about it. So, yeah, the recommendation we had tonight as a community council was to postpone the resolution and ask the planning department to bring forward a more comprehensive recommendation after they've coordinated with two other referrals that are headed your way. So Assemblymember Nowers proposed a different ordinance, but very much related in front of the assembly, and I won't bother reading the ordinance and the information memo numbers, but it affects the same area of, of the Matsu Borough Code, and that ordinance was referred to the Planning Commission by the assembly on September 10th, but it hasn't gotten to you yet. And then also, Assemblymember Hale proposed a related ordinance, also affecting the same section of the Matsu Borough Code, and this one was referred to you by the Planning Commission on October 1st. So it, it makes no sense for us to, to debate all of this until you have the full picture in front of you, and I believe these three referrals are related enough to each other that the planning director and his team can, can forward to you with kind of a more comprehensive recommendation and a path forward. Don't get me wrong, I, I do think there's, there's need for action. I believe where we currently stand is there's still confusion in the community and amongst the assembly as to what should or shouldn't be done with regard to mobile homes, or for that matter, pre-manufactured homes that might be, you know, configured in a way that kind of looks like a mobile home park. So I urge you to really be thoughtful as you look at these different proposals coming forward. Based on, you know, all of that, I'm glad you're postponing the ordinance, thank you. I look forward to hearing and seeing with time to understand what comes forward ultimately to the commission. Will, will that be at the next meeting, you think, or will it be something that is?
We'll need a motion for that, but likely.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who wish to speak on Resolution 24-29? Okay, is there any on the phone? No. All right. So at this time, I will close audience, or the public hearing for Resolution 24-29, unless there's any objections. Hearing and, yeah, there's one.
Can I just make one comment?
Yes.
Just so that there's not confusion here. So there are two ordinances that have been referred from the assembly. This one was, that's not in there, so it's hard to tell what it is, but that was requested by Assemblymembers Nowers, some Member Nowers. That is due back to the assembly in December, their second meeting in December. So we really have three more meetings before we actually need to have it to them, and then the next one would be Assemblymember Hale. The two are close to each other, but they don't collide, they don't conflict with each other. So, and I will be happy to explain it all at the next meeting when we take it up.
Okay. Any questions for Alex on that?
So next meeting would be enough time for us to, for you to have, the department to have this all together.
Correct, there's, there's plenty of time to, before it has to go back to the assembly.
Okay, any other questions? All right, so with that, I am going to close public hearing. No objections?
I would just keep public hearing open for the next meeting, because there may be people that want to testify on it at the next meeting.
Okay. Because this resolution is open, okay, got it. So I will not close it, got it. But at this time, I will entertain a motion to postpone this resolution till next meeting.
Commissioner Shane, I'll make a motion to postpone Resolution Number 24-29 to next meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. Commissioner McCabe.
Okay, Commissioner Shane made the motion to postpone Resolution 24-29 to next meeting, and Commissioner McCabe, second. Okay, so at this time, we, we are down to upcoming Planning Commission agenda items. Alex, do you have anything for us?
I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have on what's in your folder.
Any questions for Alex? Okay, no questions. We'll move on to Director and Commissioner comments. So let's start on the far end with Commissioner Shane.
It's a beautiful fall day out there.
Yeah.
I, I don't have any comments, thanks, everybody.
Okay, Commissioner Allen?
No comments, thanks.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Just very powerful manifestation. It's good. And I'm complete, thank you.
Commissioner Glenn?
We're happier back, Commissioner Fernandez. Thanks, everybody.
Commissioner McCabe?
No comment.
Okay. My comment is that, good meeting, we keep learning every day. And Alex, why don't you give yours?
I have no comments.
No comments?
Yep.
Okay. Then that concludes our meeting tonight, so at 6:44, I will say our meeting is adjourned.